We're recording.
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of Executive, please.
Salute.
Salute. Second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilman Big Horse. Call for the question, please, come out of Executive.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Mr. Shabola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The council's come out of Executive. It entertained any motion of the items which was discussed in confidentiality.
At this time?
Yes, Councilman Rebar.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our chairman to write a formal letter to the superintendent of the BIA requesting that that he or she postpone or delay the plugging of the wellbores on three groups, actually six groups of consolidated leases that were discussed in executive session. I don't know if I need to recite every single one of them, or if that's something that we could do by reference. But the motion is to authorize the chairman to write a letter requesting that the wells that had previously been demanded to be plugged due to cancellation of previous leases be delayed until such time that we can have an opportunity to evaluate. Well, let me strike that. I don't know, like we said earlier, in Executive, we don't need to get in the weeds about it.
Read what you have, dear, and I'm gonna correct the last sentence.
To authorize chairman to write a letter to superintendent of the BIA requesting he or she to postpone the delay of the plugging of the wellbores.
That were canceled under continental oil and refinery?
Yeah, canceled under continental refinery.
Oil and refinery.
Oil and refinery.
Leases.
Leases.
However you want to word that, we'll leave it at that.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rebar, seconded by Councilman Chappellford. Any other discussion? There are none. Call for the question. And we can complete that later. All it has to have is the canceled leases, the continental, because they're the only ones like that.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Mr. Shabola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yes, dear, could you step out and ask Mr. Hester to come in and give us a short update on Raptors' advanced recovery from us, please?
Emphasis on short, Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, any council would like that consideration. Can make it known to the chair, and we'll take care of it immediately. We're running at twelve, two twelve right now. I think we need to wrap up pretty quick. Also, everything's been shut down. Laney has already announced that our office will be closed. The nations went ahead and closed for Thursday and Friday, and Monday was already a date, so we've already sent that out. Mr. Hester, you guys make yourselves at home. We're not in Executive, this is open session.
We don't have any white noise now?
Do you want it?
No, no, please.
I was gonna say, thank you.
Please, no.
But it did work, didn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're gonna tell you it worked. Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to start?
Sir, I am appreciative of your effort today. I'd like for you to take over the floor. You had asked that you come in, give us an update. I asked you to wait because it's so muddy waters elsewhere, but this is your time to wrap. That's why I wanted it today.
We've got basically, this is not gonna take a long time.
It, we can't have it.
And, uh, I'll be doing introductions, specific area, we do the rest of it. He's handing out copies of the slides, but basically, I wanna start with a real short story, which will lead into, about almost five years ago, you know, I had open open chest heart surgery where I had a valve replaced and, uh, three bypasses. When I woke up from the surgery, I had been sitting at the orphan well committee with Tommy and Councilman Redcorn and Councilman, what's your last name? Rebar. And basically, I had the surgery, and when I woke up from the surgery, all I could have on, had on my mind was, how can we, you guys probably won't say this, but how can we fix the mineral estate? Because barrels are going down, 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 now. And the solution that I came up with, the only way that we could really ever affect this is to get control of our own wells. So with that being said, we're here because we have some assumptions of some things that were on the table. Those things involve canceled leases, orphan wells, a potential CO2 flood, and plugging of wells and selling carbon credits. Gary's gonna touch on all of these things, but there's one other thing. And Councilman Redcorn, sorry, Councilman Rebar mentioned this earlier about all the wells that exist in the county that don't make much of anything. Well, recently, I still consult for a company that does these polymer treatments. And we've recently treated three Mississippi's chat and/or lime wells and raised the production nine barrels a day collectively for three. That doesn't sound like very much. But also, this, you know, these, this costs less than ten thousand dollars. This could be done to a lot of wells that exist in the mineral state. But since we don't, we're not really a service organization anyway at this time. We need somebody that does, somebody needs to do this. So with that being said, uh, I will turn this over to Gary, and he's going to tell you about the services that we can, we think we can provide to you in these areas.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
Gary, please, just stand up, do a short introduction for the record.
Uh, yes, my name is Gary Green. I'm a petroleum engineer. And, uh, the three of us are Raptors, and we have, uh, just to remind you, we've been here several times, but we have over a hundred twenty years of combined experience in the oil and gas sector. Uh, we've studied the council several months that we've been here, how you guys do business, and today I've got two things I wanna present to you. There's only three slides. Two of the slides are what we can do. These are things that we, uh, projects that utilize our experience and knowledge. And then the last slide is our proposal, of what we've proposed to do for you guys with the contract over the next two years. So on very first slide, what can Raptors do for the mineral council? We could perform, uh, what we'd like to look at doing is performing engineering and field evaluations of-
Continue.
Uh, we'd like to perform an engineering evaluation and field evaluation of terminated and canceled leases. Uh, we understand there's a number of those, and these two things go hand in hand, you have to do a desktop review, look at the old production, and then look in the field what equipment is there, and if the, if it's ready to be, if it can produce, or if it needs additional equipment. Uh, then we would like to market, uh, the commercial leases to operators or a nation-owned entity. Uh, those operators may be Osage operators, or we would bring some in from other, uh, outside of Osage County, but we could market those commercial leases. Uh, another thing we could do is advise a nation-owned entity on all things that are related to operating oil and gas leases. Uh, we've operated thousands of wells, and all are interested to know about, uh, well-operated, well-operated business. Uh, another thing we could do is reevaluate the orphan wells that have been deemed commercial. Uh, we'd use current economics, and we would employ advanced recovery techniques of polymer and microbes that we're familiar with. The second page of what we can do is, we can assist in maximizing production and revenues, uh, from CO2 projects. Jim could speak about the polymer, uh, the different mobility and heterogeneity control techniques. Uh, also, just a, there's a comment here about seventy percent increase of PHG over WAG. Uh, that's what that second page I gave you, the second paper I gave you. Uh, studies show that if you, okay, in a CO2 flood, it's water alternating with gas. So they'll eject gas, then they'll alternate back to water. With the, if you use polymer instead of water, the PHG process, which would be polymer alternating gas, you can increase your recoveries by as much as seventy percent, and that's what that other paper contains.
That was based on the study that Texas A&amp;M-
From up here? Wonder what's this study at?
Yeah, yes, Texas A&amp;M did the modeling work for Chaparral for the North Gravine unit. Why Chaparral didn't do a pack process instead of a whack process, I don't know. I have heard some more stories about it, but anyway, the modeling showed up to seventy percent just 'cause any time you inject any fluid into a reservoir, it's gonna channel through the battle lease resistance. If you can block that off and defer it, the other areas should get more oil. So it's, it's not a real complicated situation.
Another thing we could do is perform more rapid and efficient plugging program. Uh, we can get multiple crews involved in rigs and, uh, try to cash in on the carbon credit discussion that's going on. The reason I've got a question mark there is because it's my understanding that it's not until Q1 of 2023, 2023, are all the rules actually gonna be established on how you do that? How you do a before and an after analysis so that you can say, okay, you, you you gained this much by plugging this well because you shut it off completely, you went from X to zero. So those rules have not been established yet. It's unknown right now to me, and maybe probably to anybody, but is the process and the cost gonna be more cumbersome than the actual credit that you're gonna get? Can't answer that, but that's a possibility. Uh, another thing that was mentioned earlier this morning was, uh, salt scars and grass kills. We can actually remediate those, uh, salt scars and grass kills, and we can bring it back to its original state and get grass going again. Uh, another thing we'd like to do would be to advise the mineral council all matters oil and gas related. So the last slide is what we are proposing to the council. These five things that we would like to propose. And that would be to perform the engineering and field review of terminated canceled leases. I understand there's thirty quarter sections possibly that have some equipment on them, and so that's what, that's one thing we wanna do is perform the the desktop and the field review of those. Uh, and then once we determine the market value of those, that we would, uh, of the commercial leases, then we would market those to uh, outside operators or a nation-owned entity if the tribe wanted to produce, uh, for oil and gas themselves. Next thing would be to assist the mineral council in maximizing revenues from CO2 projects, EOR projects that like the CO2 projects. Depth and bottle pressure are very important when, uh, putting in a CO2 flood or considering a CO2 flood. The standard stringer, uh, in our opinion, is a likely candidate for another CO2 project. Uh, we would like to oversee the plugging program so we can maximize the value. Because if you're gonna get carbon credits, then you need to plug them as fast as you can. So, uh, that's one other thing we'd like to do is oversee that and provide technical expertise as needed, always with the goal to produce more oil for the, uh, the, the count, the, in the county, for the shareholders. So our proposal here is we would do all these things for a two-year contract, and, uh, we've, we've heard about this two hundred thousand that's out there, uh, that you guys have to spend, and we would do this two-year contract for the two hundred thousand and provide these, these services for that money uh, over a two-year period.
It would have been you three on the contract?
Or me?
It would be you three under the contract?
The company, the LLC Raptors, on the contract.
Are you gonna encompass any of the efforts that you do on-site of remediation, things of that nature?
Uh, that's not in these five. If you guys want that done, we, you know, could roll that up into a contract. You know, that's all yet to be determined. Uh, this is just what I'm proposing, that it looks like needs to be done in my eyes in the next two years, you know?
Well, you put it on the other page, you can perform remediation, salt scars, and kill grass areas. I'm just asking you, are you gonna do it?
I, I'm saying we can do that, and we would, we would like to include that into a contract, if that's what you guys want. That would be, those items in that contract would be at your discretion.
I hope so.
Yeah, quick comment. Uh, the Texas A&amp;M study that Mr. Hester-
Yes, thank you.
Was referring to, if that's successful, and they increase by seventy percent, we take our last payment, six thousand one hundred thirty dollars per head ride, up to eight thousand six hundred and thirty per head ride. If that's successful, and this is a hard-hitting study on our own field that we own as Osages, and I understand they're whack process, and we're trying to push it to consider a pack EAG as they've been assisting. So just a small, small move could bring twenty-five hundred dollars per quarter, per head ride to our shareholders. I think this is darn sure worth looking into. Just, just one of those bullet points here that they presented. This is potential for a big gain of, of a line cut to our shareholders per quarter of twenty-five hundred dollars based on the production going on out there right now.
Counselor.
The other things, I think they just bring more value. I think you're hitting on the salt scars. There's no value in your head ride. But we're responsible, more responsible by getting, attacking these locations. Uh, perform an engineering and field review of all terminated canceled leases. We do have a geologist, but these guys are petroleum engineers. We don't have that. We do have one at the BIA, but we have no access to that individual. So I think they could bring a lot to the table for these areas to make these assessments and get back with us. This money, uh, is two hundred thousand dollars per head ride.
Okay, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know the exact dollar amount, it's why I'm kinda putting it at that. I don't know what it is. Alright. Thank you.
And thank you. On your polymer project alone, uh, I think with the other, is that, that process has been in, but you're talking about what you have developed to bring in the, the new directive. I know that you've had the old, the old project.
When you say polymer, it's a very, very broad subject. Let's just look at it as fluid diversion techniques. There are several different ways. You have to analyze the problem that exists in the reservoir and then apply the correct solution. And that's the knowledge we really have. We don't, we don't, we have no proprietary technology.
Okay, but you did say seventy percent increase.
Yes, that's basic, basic. Yeah, just, just to clear that up, that's, that's, that's what y'all were hitting on. That has to do with the existing CO2 flood project in Osage County right now. Now, what Jim is alluding to with some of his other comments are individual well treatments that you can treat-
Possibilities on it.
Possibility to increase production, decrease water, in- increase the revenue.
Is there anything you'd like to add right now before I go to the council?
Uh, basically, if it comes down to doing stuff with polymers and diversion techniques, we can pretty much do everything that can be done. I have put in Oliver floods. I've done these cross-link treatments. I've done pretty much everything anybody can do with water diversion or gas diversion, any kind of fluid diversion. I've even done two CO2 floods in my past, one up in northern, uh, western Colorado near rifle, and then another one down in southwestern Arkansas, where we actually went in with Oliver gels, blocked off the channel into the CO2, and improved production substantially.
As an effort just to compact it and then profitability, yeah.
Yes, yes, just-
But you're open for all suggestions under the contract?
Yes.
That we have?
Yes, yeah, we, we would like to be, assume I partner to you guys advising you in areas that you may have a lack of knowledge.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have a lack of knowledge how to spend our money, so that would be the only thing you'll have to worry about. Let's try that, Councilwoman Curry.
How do we proceed from here? Do you provide us with a draft contract, and then we send it for review, or we review it and send it to the AG, or what, what do we do next?
Counsel, Councilman Red.
Yeah, thank you, Rebar. Uh, you had mentioned two hundred thousand dollars that we have. What two hundred thousand dollars are you talking about? We don't have any two hundred thousand dollars.
Nobody told me that.
What, what two hundred thousand were you referring to?
The, the two hundred thousand that had been mentioned before that was gonna be used at the, uh, St. John, St. John unit, uh, the two hundred thousand that I understood that you guys had to put in some project.
Now, we have two hundred thousand dollars to operate the St. John Skinner Sand Unit.
Okay.
And we are not doing that. And so, we don't have the two hundred thousand dollars to, we can't reallocate that. That came from the Osage Nation Congress.
Okay.
Uh, so with that being said, we don't have two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, in fact, we have a very limited budget for all of our business affairs, uh, none of which is to operate wells or work on wells. And this group of eight, of mineral council members that represent the headright owners who own the the mineral estate, we don't, we don't own any wells. So I don't know, so Mike, I'm thinking that you're making this presentation to the wrong group of people. Maybe you ought to offer this to the people who have wells, the operators. We don't own any wells. We don't operate any wells. Uh, we don't have any funds to do that, even if we wanted to. So I'm thinking you've got the wrong audience. That's all, Chairman.
Yes, Counsel, Councilman Redcorn.
Um, the two hundred thousand for the St. John, according to the AG, we could, the mineral council can spend that as they so choose. And we can go and get-
After their approved contract by the AG.
I'm sorry.
After their approved contract review by the AG.
And that's so, that is what the AG told me. That's a possibility to use that two hundred thousand. Now, let me say this, I think coming into minerals five, there's been some apprehension, and I fully respect it, that we don't produce ourselves, and I, I say, yeah, that's probably a good thing. I don't think it'll fly this round in minerals five. So this one has no production in it, but I think the ability to see where we can apply some of these technologies, I think that really could help us in our decision processes going forward. You mentioned the CO2 flood, but you also mentioned I could bring some of these nine barrels per barrel to some locations.
Yes, if I can-
And if I could just say, I bet there's a lot of locations-
Oh, there's probably three thousand wells out there in the county.
Three times nine, and then we're adding more, more barrels, royalty barrels to our headright owners for payment. So I think for two hundred thousand dollars, I think we can get some, some really good stuff done and help us determine if we're missing out on a big opportunity here.
Counsel.
So, what I'm the most interested in is the first bullet, engineering and field review of terminated canceled leases. So you say all of them, but how many do you think you could realistically do in two years?
I don't know how many there are. I know about thirty quarter sections, uh, and I think it's seven to some wells. That could be done fairly quickly. Uh, if there's other terminated leases, I understand also that there are leases being terminated or canceled all the time.
Two differences.
Yeah, so yeah, big difference, but we would distinguish the difference, and we would, we'd like to help you guys look at all of them, determine some value, and then, and then market those to either outside operators, or if there was an Osage entity that was gonna operate. But, yeah, I, I, I would say in two-year time, we could, we could look at several hundred. It depends on the, where the information is available, how, where I would get the information, how good the information is, vet the information out. We could do several hundred.
Yes, sir.
Evaluating these wells can be somewhat difficult, because the first thing that you look at when you evaluate a lease or a well is, how much wet oil is this made? Because typically, at the depths that we're, the wells in, in, in Osage County are, if it's a solution gas drive reservoir, that's means the gas in the reservoir is what's providing the energy to get the fluids to the well. If you recovered twenty percent of the oil in place, you did a tremendously good job. If you water flowed it and get another ten or fifteen percent, you had a good water flow. But that means there's still sixty-plus percent of that oil is still in the ground, and you have to attack it with something that one will contact the maximum amount of reservoir. That's where mobility control with polymers and other things come in. And you have to make sure your wellbores are cleans, because if it can't get through the wellbore, we have technologies to do this stuff. When I said so, it was easy. Just looking at the cumulative oil produced from a lot of these wells, uh, may be sufficient just to say, okay, this is, this is not our work, we're not gonna do this. But if it's cumed a significant amount of oil, because the more it's cumed, the more is there left. So that's, that's the initial, uh, criteria for, for looking at. Then you need to look at the, what's the reservoir pressure, because the reservoir pressure will determine how much oil rate that you can achieve. So it could be an easy situation, or it could be a complex, but we could do lots of ones. Or lots of whatever, you know, it's, uh, but something needs to be done, because I see a disconnect between the selling of leases that, that you're attempting to do and people buying them. And I think that we could put ourselves into the middle of this and package stuff up from an engineering standpoint that would maybe attract more buyers.
I agree.
Chairman Allen. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
Presentation, all, coming back again.
Again and again.
We were just talking about some leases before, and, uh, talking about getting evaluated. And I was reading right here that, that's what these guys do, is evaluate, evaluate leases, no matter, no matter where they're at, it doesn't matter. So, uh, I mean, it just, it just fell right into place, you know? We were talking about that, no more than thirty minutes ago, here they kinda, they're saying, well, we evaluate leases, just pay some money, we'll do it. So, uh, why not? We want, we want to evaluate as quick as we can, right? We don't want to be evaluated next summer, next fall, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We want to evaluate it right now. So what's, what's the hope of it? Let's get it done. Thank you.
Counsel.
Uh, I would propose next, if you guys would meet with us, do you wanna meet with us next meeting?
Yes, I, I-
What is it you wanna do, whatever then?
We are totally ignorant about what we need to do with that, you know, the, the Osage.
Okay.
So we need help.
I think we could postpone approving a con, what do you call it? Postpone?
That we would table?
Table. That we would table approval of a contract for next meeting. That we would table approval of a contract for next meeting.
I think we'd just get on the agenda to review a contract.
Yes, I, 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 I think that would be wise.
Which one is it? Do you wanna review or do you wanna?
Has to be reviewed. We haven't seen it.
You, you need to figure this out yourself whether you wanna do it or not.
I, okay, let me say, we're gonna table an approval of a contract with Raptor on these bullet items, cause we got some things we gotta work out with AG and the contract. And then come back for an approval at the next meeting. How much time do we need to do that? Is my question.
How much more than you need to do?
Okay, so we have our next meeting, Lenaya, when?
Sixth.
Is it on the fifth? Oh, because of the date?
It's the sixth of January.
I should never second guess myself.
The next one will be after that, eighteenth of January. Is that okay?
I'm not gonna be here on the eighteenth of January. I'm gonna be in Jamaica.
My, my only question regarding the date or when we do what next is, are you guys gonna present a draft contract to us? Or are we supposed to?
You are.
Get one to you?
I'd like to review one that's sent to the council. And, uh, CC to Chief of Staff, Lacy Reynolds.
Do you need to be here on the eighteenth?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I, I'm just. I'm not, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we table approval of a contract with Raptor on these bullet items until the eighteenth of January to find out what we can from the AG.
As a form of a motion.
Yes.
A second? A second, that's what I need to, discussion, Counselor, we're barred.
Yeah, cause I, I completely, uh, object, uh, to, to that motion and here's why. Uh, we don't have a contract. You're tabling something that's not even on our agenda, okay? There, there's nothing about a contract on our agenda to table. All right? We're talking about us using two hundred thousand dollars of our money that we don't have. That we could, you know, that, that we have any, that we have earhart for this purpose. Uh, I say that we table this item, the Raptor, what, what is our agenda?
On the floor.
The Raptor advanced recovery item. We table it and give ourselves a chance to discuss this and maybe get some clarification of where we might get some funding. First of all, these wells you're talking about are not our wells. We don't own any wells. There's an orphaned well program where the BIA has a bunch of wells. They're not our wells. We're plugging them more and I don't, I'm not, I'm starting to wonder why I don't walk to anymore. Uh, I need to be careful how I word this.
I wish you would, thank you.
But, uh, uh, so frankly, frankly, the well, you know, the, if you're talking about orphan wells, are you, all these wells that you wanna work on? Are you talking about our orphan wells?
No, we're not one.
Our abandoned wells? Are you talking about another operator's wells that you wanna help them increase their production? We don't have any wells.
You're misinterpreting everything we're saying.
What wells are we talking about? Tell me, tell me one well, give me the name of one well that you wanna work on.
The, the item listed here, may I, may I answer? If the item listed here is talking about engineering field review of terminated and canceled leases. Whatever that, that's not orphan wells.
Okay. I just, you know, Jack, this real quick, Mr. Reddickel brought it up. The thirty quarter section you are referring to is the Compton.
Okay.
Is that right?
Whatever it calls.
There, and Mr. Reddickel said we need a quick and dirty engineering review. I agree with, we just said it and that is.
Well, we may wanna put that out for bid to do that kind of work. Uh, I would like to know what wells you're talking about wanting to, you know, use this technology on. We don't own any wells.
We're not.
And if you're talking about evaluating some of the tracks, there's nothing stopping you from doing that. You, you can, you can evaluate any lease you want to in our mineral state. Our operators do that all the time. We have some sitting in the room that they look at opportunities on our mineral state. We wish more people would. But we spend a lot of time as council getting outside of our lane. We're royalty owners. And I wanna concentrate on leasing and drilling and improving the production we've got. And I'm just, I'm delighted that we have, you know, interested parties that wanna help us improve what we have. But, and if you want us to introduce you to some of our operators, we could do that. But we don't have any wells. We have open acreage. If you wanna evaluate wells on our open acreage, go around the corner to the BIA and go talk to them about the wells. We don't have any wells. So, uh, but back to the, the motion that's on the ta, on the floor. I think it's misworded. It's talking about a contract and we're not, it's, we don't have any contract on our agenda today to table. So I, I'd like at least for it to be reworded. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Yes, Counselor, ready?
Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, we got an email from the Attorney General of the Osage Nation on that, on that money we got from Congress as well. We could spend that money in any fashion we do, we so desire. End story.
Yeah, and we said, if I remember right, we said if we wanted to go buy a ski boat, could we use it to buy a ski boat? Answer was yes. So do we buy a ski boat or not?
Call for a question. Counselors, any other discussion? Lenaya read out the, therefore.
I am part of it. Can you reword?
That's why I asked you.
I make a motion.
Can you reword?
That we table a conversation for a contract with Raptor and the bullet items they presented to January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. That's it.
What contract?
The conversation for a contract.
No, second. As amended, as, can we just discuss? Do you have it now?
Yes.
Call for the question.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
No.
Councilman Shackelford.
No.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll get to review that now, that you can make this contract, send it to myself as a, uh, CC, Chief of Staff, Ms. Reynolds, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Uh, with that, I'd like to move on down to the next agenda item, please. Uh, Councilman Reddickel, Rainbow Yard Resolution.
That was a mistake, Chairman, uh, that was.
We already took care of it.
We already took care of it.
I'm gonna strike that and go down to the by annual meeting dates. I believe we've already taken care of that also. Is that correct, Lenaya, on the date or do you need a resolution?
You just need to nail down which date you wanted. You provided three, uh, the nineteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-third. We just need to know which one.
Of January? I believe we went with the twenty-third, wasn't it?
I think so, yeah.
I, I'd like to, do we need a resolution for that? And then you have, the resolution also says date provided and an agenda. How quick do you need that agenda?
Agenda, okay, Ms. Cooper's requested that it be, she said per Osage settlement.
Give me a minute.
She needed thirty days and that at least it would be as two weeks. She needs two weeks, at least.
She'll get what she gets. We'll, we'll shoot for the two weeks. They're not going anywhere. And definitely they can't find another tribe or they go down. Tell them, you know, if you don't wanna finish up the settlement, I actually know a guy who knows the case. I filed it twenty-two years ago. It kept me up at night, so I couldn't resettle. So with that being said, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion that we chose that date and provided a, uh, agenda. So, so I have a motion on the floor by Second Chair Tishawala, seconded by Counselor Reddickel. Call for the question, please. Now marking in January, did you say the twenty-third?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Yeah, well, will you have a discussion to develop the agenda?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna actually send an email out and get it sent to you all.
And, and I might add that I think that the discussions for our agenda should be, uh, held in executive, or even whether by Zoom or whatever, because some of the, some of the items may be a little touchy.
Yes, sir. And also the addition of the ones we worked on today. Are those on that list also? They weren't, or they? Okay, we're gonna have to adj, we're gonna adjust that. Uh, call for the question.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Repeat the question, please.
Uh, for, for the, uh, by annual date to be the twenty-third.
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yes, she was remarking late on the last of the minute meetings. Are they available or can I table that?
Table.
Please, uh, I don't need to table it. We'll just go ahead and strike it?
Yes.
Counselor?
When are we gonna need to go over the data before the twenty-third?
Oh, that's, uh, you'll, we'll have it on the sixth and then we can call a, a special session or a consultation meeting for that. Just help us set a date for that in January. I, I figure, uh, let's, let's just discuss it real quick while we're all sitting here. We're fired.
So we can do it in executive on the sixth?
Actually, that one, we can or can't, we don't have to unless I'm with Counselor. There might be a couple items we might oughta go ahead and go into executive.
Yeah.
And please bear with me. We, we could go after the meeting of the eighteenth. But actually, uh, the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth looks good. It'll be in between meetings. Something of that nature.
Yeah, they told me that time is in town.
And with that, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion, Chair. So, so we got a motion on Second Chair Tishawala, seconded by Counselor Redcorn. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Red. Yes. Councilman Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and not long before then. Uh, we did it, we did a now.